Some movie, we want the movie.
I know, everything's all mixed up. Okay, calling the regular meeting to order for January twenty twenty four. Do we have a roll call, please?
Wall Street.
Here.
Over.
Frozen.
March.
Here.
Bell's. Evening.
Here.
Robin's. Party.
Here.
Now.
Here.
Cover.
Thank you. We do have a quorum. Great. Um, next on the agenda is the action on the minutes from the regular meeting of December fourth. If someone moved the minutes. Move till.
It's okay.
Second, Cardi, is there any changes, additions, corrections? Seeing on, all in favor of the minutes as posted say, I, I.
I am opposed.
Not a minute. Sorry, minutes are approved. Uh, next up, approval of the agenda. Can someone move the agenda, please?
So moved, so forth.
Okay, and Cardi, support, court, any changes to the agenda? Seeing none, all in favor of the agenda, they have?
My.
Well, it's not. All right, moving right on. Public ends. We do have a public hearing for tonight, which is the text amendment to the zoning ordinance regarding fences. So I, we probably just have your presentation, I'm guessing. Or is it Grace? I'm sorry.
Okay, we'll do it really quick. And normally Grace would, she's a little under the weather, but she's.
But thanks for sticking it out, Grace.
Um, so you're doing the public hearing tonight, as you mentioned now. It's for a text amendment to Article Three, General Provisions, Section three oh nine fences. And it's specifically to, excuse me, revise the standards um that are in the industri- for industrial, like industrial I one, and research and development R Z zoning distress. Um, so subsection G uh fences are permitted in the I one and R D district when they meet the fi- or when the following standards are met. The first one, side and rear yard, and they're not allowed in the front yard. It's the second one that currently states maximum height of six feet. A maximum height of eight feet may be allowed on the property when a principal building contains an approved industrial use and when the fence does not constitute an unreasonable hazard or nuisance. When we went through the um, the uh zoning amendment or the, I'm sorry, not zoning amendment. The amendment for the gymnastics plan. Um, staff took a more liberal approach to these guidelines, being that they were within an industrial district. The building was uh used for industrial. It's in an industrial park, in an industrial district. Um, we aired on, on a more liberal of um interpretation. Um, that an eight foot fence would be allowed, brought it to you, you guys recommended approval to council, council ultimately did approve it as well. However, one of the council people did bring up a more strict interpretation. Whether it's a conservative interpretation or a liberal, it's not right or wrong in either. But uh council did approve it, but they asked that we take out or take to you this amendment where it took out um the principal building having an industrial use. Um, and so that's what you're, that's what this amendment is about, is about. We've identified um uh the analysis based on the criteria and twenty three oh six, which I just explained. Um, and then that motions, excuse me, for uh approving it or denying it and making that recommendation to council. As it's presented. Any changes you might have, and then the finding of fact being the documentation that's provided here. If you've got any questions, I'm happy to answer it.
Great. Let's, let's uh go to the public hearing and then we will um back to you probably for questions. Seeing, well, we'll open the public hearing, seven oh five. No one in the audience? And no one online, unless I'm missing someone behind a podium chart? Okay. Um, seeing no one, yes, we'll close because I might turn seven oh six, perfect, close, okay, seven oh six. Um, okay, at this time, we um kind of are open for discussion. We have some motions and then uh we can have discussion, questions, comments. Everybody like to make motion on page uh ten of the packet?
I will, I guess. See no other.
You can take it.
Under a pursuant to section twenty three point oh six of the city of Dexter zoning ordinance, together with the information presented by staff and the input received during the public hearing conducted by the planning commission. On January third, twenty twenty four, the planning commission recommends the city council approve P T A's V O two three dash zero zero three text amendments to the ordinance, Article Three, General Provisions, Section three point oh nine fences as presented and based on the following findings. Documents, documentation has been provided from city staff that supports the proposed text amendments in accordance with section twenty three point oh six A as cited here in.
Okay, move to. Report. Sport. It's moving, or it's like Cardi, sorry. Um, all right, questions, discussions? One question, Michelle, is, is that just specific? I, I could have looked this up myself, but I didn't have the time. So the industri- like how it specifically calls out industrial use? Did the other districts call that out for fence requirements? Like, say, like, it has to be an approved commercial use? It has to be approved?
I can recall.
Yeah, cuz it's such weird.
It, yeah, it's, it's, this isn't new language that you put in um when we updated, this would have been language.
Oh, no, it wasn't, okay.
Is carryover from before, and we haven't just, we haven't touched anything regarding fences in the industrial district in my entire tenure, so I, I can't speak to whatever intent they have been there.
Yeah.
Um, but I, I'm sure there was some reason that it was there and.
Okay, sorry.
I just can't tell you what it was.
No, no, and I don't expect it to. It was just interesting that that specifically calls out that use has to be in the building, but. It's fine. Right, any other questions? Um, can you give a roll call, please?
Over.
Yes.
Yes. March.
Yeah.
Cardi.
Yes.
Bill.
Yep.
Wall.
Yes. Right, forward with that one.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, no prearranged citizen participation tonight. Uh, reports of officers. Uh, I have nothing to report, other than it's good to be back, cuz I know I missed a couple meetings, the last couple meetings, so um, thank you. All right. I think that's it for me, planning commissioners. Any items from planning commissioners, anybody wants to share anything?
V B A did not meet.
So, I mean, okay. Good. And our council rep is not here for now, so um, community development report.
Okay, you've got my report for wind updates. Do you have any questions for them?
It's pretty.
Okay.
Sound right.
Um, uh, if you get a chance, look over that demographic data.
Um, interesting.
That uh is be, was compiled for the D D A's strategic plan update. Um, a lot, there's a lot of raw data. Um, so if you're a numbers geek, have fun with that. Um, but if you just wanna get to the nuts and bolts, the um, there is a the beginning portion of each of these documents has a great executive summary, but she's also boiled it down into the bullet points that are, are provided in your packet tonight. Excuse me, um. The article that I cited in here and provided you the rethinking economic development and from bearing um incentive bill to quality bill and how it, the author compared that to the turkey dinner versus your Christmas holidays. I thought that was kind of very interesting.
Yeah, it was, it was.
Different.
Yeah, it was really weird.
Yeah.
But good, but relevant.
Yeah.
We're not relevant, but.
And which one did you see Dexter be?
Very anti-turkey.
Yes, that's a good way, but.
I guess so.
Um, um, we may be, we may be doing an um an amendment to the master plan. Um, Mishra has announced their application, uh, application. Uh, portal is gonna be opening January sixteen. Um, up to fifty thousand dollars, no match required to um, to do, to do master plans, zoning ordinances, amendments there to, to promote housing. We've already done our master plan and done our zoning ordinance amendments. But we're finding that there's a couple of things that hmm, after having this a couple of years, some things that we can yes, um, or tweak, if you will. But the other thing that we have to look at is the, the, the major thing driving this is if we're going to be looking at housing um outside of our boundaries. There's some things we need to look at as it pertains to that particular set of policy.
So it's outside the city boundaries.
Yep.
Yes.
So annexations, things like that. And not just the Sloan Kingsley area. But there are other areas that border the city that um that need that type of attention as well.
Especially if we're gonna bring water across.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely, that, yeah, exactly, I was just.
So Carlisle Wortman is providing us with a proposal to do those updates. Um, I'd ask for a creative um public engagement focus proposal. Um, because that's there's already been um direction at council for having public engagement for the Sloan Kingsley annexation. Public engagement on the thirty forty five Broad Street. You might as well just
Yeah.
Put this all together and, and do it well. Um, council will look, I don't have the proposal yet, it's supposed to be here tomorrow, cuz it's gotta go in the council's packet for them to say yea or nay on the eighth. They can do a conditional approval if they like it, um, subject to getting the grant. Um, they may still want to do it even if they don't, because there are still things that we may need to um update in the master plan. So we'll see where this goes, but.
Nothing. Thank you.
We're gonna have some work maybe this year.
Yeah, no, I think that's a great idea, and as Jim said, I think I, I I was thinking about that last month as I was walking, we were looking at the Pelham site, because as we're bringing that water and sewer across there, right? We've never really, again, my whole time here, really much looked at the Dexter Chelsea Road. It's always, we've looked at Sloan Kingsley a couple of times.
Yeah.
But again, we need to look at it again, because, but we've never really looked at that corridor, because there is that hard stop at the, at the river.
You're absolutely right. And the other thing.
That's important.
Um.
And there's something's gonna happen there.
Absolutely, absolutely. Going farther down Anron Lake Road to Dexter Peatney Road. Um, um, Councilman Michelle's would like us to reengage with uh Corman Farms. Um, yeah. Uh, for the potential of seeing what they might need assistance with to um be brought into the.
But they, yeah, that'd have to be a huge, there's not just their properties, a lot of properties in between.
No, it borders. It doesn't border West Church or One Fine.
The, the.
It's across the street, so I guess you could.
Property doesn't, isn't to the corner and you have to go through.
Right, cuz there's a farmer, and then there's enough parcel.
And then there are two vacant pieces, which are also Corman. And then you have the big Corman where the property is currently developed.
Okay.
The two properties that are next to Jenny's that are in Webster, they're not looking to actually develop. They would continue the development on the.
But they need that, cuz we have to have a contiguous, I don't know, right? I mean, we can't annex an island.
Um.
The other side of the wall.
The other side is, is the Cedars.
Right, well, okay, so across the road, yes, that's what I mean, but we have to at least get those additional parcels to kind of link up to that. It looks so funky, the boundary, but yeah, okay, yeah, all right.
So there's, there's a lot of things.
So since we're talking about this, I'd ask you about this privately. I, I'd ask Michelle if we can, as part of projects, mandate or force trade for affordable housing. Uh, you know, if we're gonna start annexing stuff into the city, like I, and we're gonna be talking to the public about their feelings on this. I think that should be part of it. I, I, I think we should ask our community, particularly given the turnout we've got and the feedback we've got. If as part of a large annexation, they want us to be asking the developer, for instance, when they commit into a P U D, like, we could ask for that.
Oh, there's absolutely, you can, and I don't require us to do P U D, so you can under the zoning.
And I think based on the feedback we've just gotten multiple times. It seems to me like we should be asking for that, but let's get some official public input on it.
Right, yeah, yeah.
Absolutely.
Yep, great.
Oh.
Awesome.
That's a big news.
Thank you for, yeah, that's
Um.
Good news.
The um, I appreciate all the different feedback that you all have provided regarding the fire station. Um, the architect and council has listened. Excuse me, the architect did come back, as you've seen, with, with um um, a horse attempt, let's put it down. Um, Kyle and um chat sent me um uh, the, the, the bays for the appar- uh, the foundation hotel in Detroit. Those are obviously much the scale and massing isn't the same, but the point is, what's, one of the things missing from an architectural feature is that, that curved, um, whether it's on top of the windows or above the overhead doors. And the, the, um, I've passed that on to the architect. And he's currently looking at ways to um add those features in um so that it all works with the building. He recognizes that, yeah, that's a dominant feature in nearly every historic downtown building, so it was something.
Great, yeah, thank you, uh.
Embrace.
Kyle?
Yeah, really smart.
And I think everybody also agreed when they saw how nice, how much nicer the building looked without that angle.
Without air.
So, but.
Great.
Um, um. The, the it won't be back in front of you as far as actual asking for input or discussion um unless the architect comes in favor of it. Um, I know council wants to keep this moving and get it in front of you as a conceptual plan. Um, but it, it's not there yet.
Yeah, I imagine it's a lot of, a lot of work. Okay, yeah, great suggestion about the round, cuz I looked at that and I know that there's something I didn't like, but I don't know how to have the architectural frame of mind to get to that, but I think that adds great value.
Really good. It's, it's all about adding some character to a rather plain building.
And I don't know how to do that, like, I know when I see it, but I don't know what to, how to tell them, like you guys did with the round.
And there might be ways to do that, that don't necessarily jack up the cost of the project, so, you know, it's.
By the way.
We'll have to figure out the cost.
We didn't send them all over, or I didn't. With Kyle and I, mostly Kyle, looked at a whole slew of different.
Oh, I've got it.
Possibilities there, representing the past, you know, building a little bit of that into the character, so. There are a lot of things.
Well, if you wanna share it with me or with council, now is the time to do.
Yeah. Uh, great, thank you. Yeah, thanks, Michelle.
You're welcome.
Anything else, or are you done?
I'm done.
Okay. Perfect to be, it's, yeah, all right, um, citizens, what's doing, permission? Is there anybody online that would like to address the planning commission at this time? Raise your hand.
That don't look like you.
No, and seeing no one here. Move right on, yeah, old business. Oh, actually, nope, we're trans, we're postponing that to February fifth.
Correct, the one that, for the P U D, uh, there's I need to figure out, I needed to figure out with the city attorney and Carlisle Wortman how to the proper way to talk about um the P U D and its final approval with the development agreement, because what we've done is, when the P U D agreement gets signed and execute, or executed and recorded, that's what changes the actual zoning, not the final plan. The language is different now in our ordinance. And I've gotta figure out how to properly make sure everything's tied together.
Oh. Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, all right, seem not fully understand all that, but as long as you do, that's what's important.
Yeah, so if I can have you, your motion to postpone.
Okay, so we, oh yeah, that's right, cuz it's on the agenda, so can we have a motion to postpone?
I'm ready.
Okay, repeatedly. Uh. Okay, second, no, okay, um, all in favor, well, I guess we need to have a roll, actually, we have a roll call, please?
Over.
Yes.
Evening.
Yes.
Arby.
Yes.
March.
Yes.
Bill.
Yes.
Walls.
Yes. All right, postpone.
Thank you.
Okay, new business, the text amendment, air conditioners and mechanical equipment and all that fun stuff. So, um, I guess we just have Michelle again, or is it Grace?
Um, I can do it, it's.
Oh, that's true.
Um.
That's the.
Oh, sorry, I.
That's what I.
I turned over the wrong paper.
Happens to me all the time.
Losing my place and starting to worry. Why was my page different from Grace's page? Okay, sorry, I'm asking you, or we're asking you to schedule a public hearing um for February fifth, consider a text amendment to Article fourteen. Um, and that is so that we can have more specific regulations that um pertaining to setbacks, yard location, et cetera, for air conditioner, air conditioning condensers, heat pumps, and elec- and emergency electrical generators. Um, as, as it's outlined here, we've looked at it from the screening aspect of mechanical equipment. Um, uh, we've looked at it also using um accessory structures, which is really loose and but we're allowed to make certain interpretations. And that has worked very well up until recently, and um the contractors are pushing back that they don't wanna have to full commit if you don't have something specific in your ordinance. The building department is having the same problems, so this, this will alleviate that situation, so. Hopefully.
Okay. Yes, well, um.
Probably not the outcome they were hoping.
I'm sorry?
Probably not the outcome they were hoping.
Probably not, but.
That's true. Uh, okay, uh, questions for Michelle? Question? Anything? Or actually, we have our. Now I scrambled my. There you go. Yes, so we have the motion on the bottom of page twenty one.
Before you do that, do you have any kind of one clear with us as we're drafting this off?
Yeah, I mean, I know you put a couple with, I mean, she did, uh.
She actually didn't put any draft language in here for you, so.
Okay, yeah, so we don't.
I mean, you know, you go to Europe anywhere and they got all these beautiful buildings, and everybody's got one of these mini splits.
Many splits out, yeah.
Then you got that horrible cable, you know what I mean, but it's really very funny.
Yeah. It was unfortunate, but.
Right, it, it wouldn't be a bad idea to have something requiring that these.
Well, as long as you're not on the.
Level of kind of.
Review, yeah, absolutely, yeah. Because again, I think it, how it's written is fine, like, they don't, they're in the front, setbacks are fine, but.
To drill down, you know. I mean, we're anticipating ground mounted. But you bring up an interesting question for you, um, as a group, we haven't regulated window air conditioners. Um, um, we never have. You've got more and more people using mini splits. I hadn't anticipated, does that would be something you're gonna break, like? Is it?
I mean, I don't know, what if somebody like.
I actually missed what you said.
You know, you go, you go downtown, we've already regulated where you can propose.
He's.
I, I don't know. I don't know, I didn't anticipate, I didn't think that's something
Yeah, well, that's a good.
To get into, um, I know some communities, uh, like, so, um, get real antsy about how the exterior of a building, especially a commercial one, looks and they don't like any protrusions.
It, I mean.
Dealing with mechanical, electrical vents, you name it.
I mean, we can't do, uh, I would say window air conditioners are too, we don't, we don't need to touch that, not that critic, but the mini splits is a good point, although.
And you could go, you, I could see somebody getting one of these buildings downtown and sticking a bunch out on the streets, uh.
I mean, everybody know what we're talking about.
Yeah.
No, I'm Googling it.
You guys know, shut up, okay?
Yeah. We do have mini splits.
So, right.
So, that's a mini split, the white thing on the wall, that's a mini split.
Well, that's the inside.
But that's the inside, that's the inside.
Right. On the outside, there's something on the outside that it connects to.
Like this little thing about.
Yeah, it's usually good.
And there's a horrible two.
The two, right, and, and you're right, you see that on a lot of historical buildings.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, that's a fairly large box to open.
Right.
I'm not opposed to opening.
Right, that, we can look into it, not the location of that on the wall.
Right, it's X.
It's it's the fan box, that's the portion that's ground mounted. Do you want? What if somebody decides to put that on the front of the house? Do you want that?
Or on the, above the bakery, above the hardware store.
What, what's the difficulty right now with currently, you're saying they're allowed three feet from the property line in the side rear yard?
Because we use the accessory structure and the contractors are saying that's not for these.
And they don't.
Really in accessories.
Yeah, right, so.
It's accessory.
I think we just need to clarify specifically mechanical equipment, including blah, blah, blah. And then the same standards, I think, to setbacks, and unless anybody feels there's screening required, which I don't think we need to screen.
There needs to be screening requirements, but I do feel like, except some houses are built really close together, and there's some of this stuff that generates a lot of noise and it's on the side of the house.
They're absolutely very quiet.
Oh, okay, well, not all air conditioning units that I've been exposed to are always quiet. I mean, and I assume we're talking about any kind of H B A system?
Yes, right.
Yeah.
We can break it down into residential and commercial if you want, I mean, we can.
Man, I think that there's probably ideal places to put it, but I also recognize there are also existing conditions.
Worked by zone, like in the downtown, you know, this zone. I'd kind of be in favor of a broad definition of mechanical equipment that called for that equipment to be the call for regulation in line with what we're currently doing.
Yeah.
That, that we're being called out on.
And let the rest fall where it.
Yeah.
Okay, I see the point, until it becomes a problem.
Yeah, I mean, I kind of, again, but me, I'm a little curious about the upper level thing now that we're thinking about it, cuz
Nothing on the facade.
I, I, again, I don't wanna create, create a regulation if there's no problem, but there might be, and maybe if it's not additional, I'm sure this, Tom, would be. It's building code, but.
Couldn't we just say mechanical equipment has to be ground or roof mounted, not visible from the street unless they apply for a variance?
I, I don't know, well, let's, maybe it's looking, I guess, see what you.
We'll look.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think you put a ton of time into it, because it seems like most of the planning commission is okay with how, going forward, as we said, but maybe, because.
Okay.
I, I would, I would caution you, but I have heard of this in other communities. And there was something that they were requesting on a homeowner and a contractor that was maybe contrary to building code.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so you, you should look, make sure to look at building, building, make sure.
Right, right.
That's appropriate, it had to do with a window.
I'm not pushing for regulating windows.
Yeah, no, no.
Yeah, they just went in proximity.
Right.
Yeah.
But most window, most window air conditioners don't have the connected ground mounted, right?
Right, right, not the old school ones.
Generator.
Yes.
And it's proximity to where the window was on the house.
Yes, I get it, I understand. Okay. Okay.
Okay.
If you, if you make it a general statement, mechanical equipment, that'll have to go into your definitions as to what that.
We do have to fix that, yes. Thank you.
Okay, um. Right, yeah, no, any, I'm, wait, I was gonna say, I don't think we made a motion yet, did we?
I'd like to make a motion to set a public hearing on February fifth to twenty twenty four to consider a text amendment to Article fourteen of the zoning ordinance to regulate air conditioning, condensers, heat pumps, and emergency electrical generators.
Second. Okay, we'll cover it, second, Cardi. Any other questions?
Question?
No, we have a roll call, please?
Yes. Over.
Yes.
Bill.
Yes.
Cardi.
Yes.
March.
Yeah.
Walls.
Yes. All right, we're carrying for next month. Okay. Moving right along, the text amendment, allowing the zoning administrator to initiate a text amendment.
Yes, right now, the way it's written, council or planning commission has to initiate. Um, um, this came up when the storm unit first came in to play. Um. There's nothing wrong with council or planning initiating, but it adds a month of success. So, um, nine times out of ten. It. We're gonna talk with you, you know, you're gonna set that.
And if we don't like it, we'll deny it.
That's right.
So.
But I, I would like to, you know, kind of. Take that little issue out of.
Yeah, I agree. It just adds that cuz you you come up with a problem and you have to wait a month, present it to us, and then nine, almost every time we've said, okay, it's at least it's worth exploring. And then again, so to make it clear, it just gives Michelle the ability to put it in front of us before she brings it to us to ask us if she can put it in front of us. And then it, but we don't, we're not obligated to approve anything, so we can still say it's horrible idea, Michelle, but it's great. So, okay, um. So we do have a, a motion. We can also have some discussion after the motion. Don't forget to make the motion, so, um. On the bottom of page twenty three, there is a recommended motion. If somebody would like to make that, then we can ask additional questions, comments.
I will. Make a motion to set a public hearing on February five, twenty twenty four to consider an amendment to section twenty three point oh one. Initiation of amendments of the zoning ordinance.
Hey, move to. The, the Cardy. Any discussion? The questions? Question? Can we have a roll call, please?
Over.
Yes.
March.
Yes.
Yeah.
Cardy.
Yes. Yes.
Well.
Yes. All right, another public hearing. So moving right on to anticipated business for next month. So we've got the uh, public hearing, the text amendments, special use provision. And then it looks like, so we're going to be discussing another, well, the PUD, that's right, that's right, you mentioned. Okay, and then we have the additional one. So would that be three public hearings, three public, wow, okay. Um, do you, do you have anything else that you know of at this time?
No, oh, um. The film won't close on Thursday.
Oh, yeah.
By the way.
I believe he's solved it.
Okay, and he's happy.
Good.
Good.
He, uh, someone made him a good offer, I presume. But his colleague's been tied up with that business ever since he's opened it. And like he said, now I can take a vacation with the family once in a while. So he's fine with it. And as I understand it, this is all talk on the street.
That's good. Well, actually, well, well, you know, wait, wait, let's, if, if this is not official, we probably shouldn't discuss it during our meeting.
Oh.
It's, it's, even though I'm interested in it, if it's talk on the street, I don't think we should discuss it during the meeting.
So it's talk on the street, talk that I've heard or just.
Okay, true, but I don't want, good point, but, um, but I do want to ask you to follow up after, um, okay, so. We're stack, uh, citizens wishing to address the commission. Do we have anybody wishing to address the commission at this time, online?
I add from the fire station.
Nope, that's right. And that's who that is, okay. All right, um, so at that time, or at this time, do we have a motion to adjourn? So move, support Cardy, support Covert, all in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye, aye, paused.
Okay, meeting is adjourned. Okay, sorry, I just. No, you're right.